I am calling the Planning Commission meeting for August 24th, 2023, order at 6:32. All right, can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Present.
Commissioner Goff.
Present.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Present.
Vice Chair Cruz. And Chair Malari.
Present. Went out of a little bit of order, but if we all can stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that would be great. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
All right, I will go ahead and open up public comment. Public comment is reserved for the members of the public just to address the Planning Commission on items that are not on the agenda and are within the subject-matched jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Please hold your comments to three minutes, and I will go ahead and start with anybody in the room. All right, Nicole, how is it looking online?
If you are in the audience on Zoom and would like to make public comment on a non-agendized item, please just raise your hand at this time. And nobody's raising their hand.
All right, I will go ahead and close public comment. Director Cooper, do we have any agenda changes?
I do tonight. I would like to request that the Commission swap the order of the two business items and take the VMT one first. We have a consultant here tonight, so in the interest of efficiency, just be less time if we were to address that issue first.
Okay.
We want to be nice and let people get home?
Nice to the budget.
All right, do we have a motion to make that change?
I make a motion that we make a switch from to make the VMT the first item of discussion.
Roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Aye.
Chair Malari.
Aye.
Changes agreed. All right, I'm looking for the Planning Commission to approve the minutes from the July 27th Planning Commission meeting.
I'll motion that we approve the minutes from the July 27th, 2023 Planning Commission meeting.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Altman.
Aye.
Commissioner Goff.
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed.
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Aye.
Chair Malari.
Aye. All right, moving down to our first order of business, vehicle miles traveled policy to implement Senate Bill SB 743.
Thank you, Chair Malari, Planning Commission, and members of the public. I'm Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. Pleased to present to you a vehicle miles traveled or VMT policy. This is an important state law that was adopted quite some time ago, and so we're, in a sense, catching up to what we need to do to make sure that the city stays in compliant with the California Environmental Quality Act. I have a brief presentation for you. Really happy tonight, we have Colin Burgett from GHD. They're the very smart people that know all about VMT and can explain it. I can too, but not quite as adeptly. And also really happy tonight, we have Erica Mon Smith. She's our Public Works Director. The VMT affects things that happen in the public works realm as well. With that, I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Burgett, and he can walk you through, and I have a little part there at the end.
Thank you, Brent. And so I'm Colin Burgett with GHD. And so the VMT resolution is part of implementing SB 743. So SB 743 was adopted about 10 years ago, and so in this presentation, is that the right one?
We have an old-fashioned mouse.
Okay.
Or that.
So we're going to provide some background on SB 743, and then an overview of the proposed VMT thresholds that would apply to projects that are subject to CEQA. So SB 743 was passed about 10 years ago, and at the time it was passed, it's key provision was that it wanted to phase out traffic level of service, which had been sort of the key way of evaluating traffic impacts, going back to probably almost the beginning of CEQA, you know, maybe 1980 or so LOS had become sort of the standard method. And LOS focused on delay at intersections as the way of determining, you know, whether or not an impact was considered significant under CEQA. So SB 743 changed the way traffic impacts would be evaluated, and it was partly a reaction to the fact that, you know, level of service was focusing on delay to automobiles and intersections. And originally, the idea was that that would reduce air pollution. It wasn't really intended to focus on delay to people way back in the beginning. The focus was on the fact that cars in congestion will produce more pollution. But over time, that tended to lead to, you know, wider roads, mitigations often focused on reducing delay to traffic, which actually had, you know, negative effects on the environment instead of the original idea of reducing air pollution. And so, or just to back up a second, when SB 743 was first passed, it didn't specify immediately what the replacement would be, but over time, some state groups got together and met, and they focused on vehicle miles traveled as the appropriate method. And so the underlying goal really was, so California faces challenges in meeting our greenhouse reduction goals. Transportation is a big share of our carbon pollution, and past efforts to reduce greenhouse gas had been very incremental, and we weren't meeting our state goals. And so greenhouse, or VMT is a much more direct measure. You know, every mile you drive, unless you have a Tesla, you're producing some greenhouse gas. And then even electric cars such as Teslas have their own carbon footprint as well. So the goals of SB 743, in addition to the overall goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions, another key goal is that it corrects an unintended consequence of how CEQA was evaluating traffic impacts in that because level of service was very much focused locally, the intersection level, it actually made infill hard to, you know, it created problems for info projects. Info projects generally produce less environmental impacts than, say, greenfield, but because the traffic impact process was focusing on a level of service, those infill projects were having trouble because the focus was on, you know, this intersection and that intersection instead of a more holistic approach. And then other goals include simplifying approval for bicycle pedestrian transit projects and eliminating the need for lengthy expensive traffic studies. So over the years, I've worked on a lot of those old LOS studies. They were, they'd sometimes be, you know, 700 pages with appendices and big budgets, lengthy, were often the subject of lawsuits. You know, VMT has its detractors sometimes too, but it's a much more streamlined process. So in terms of what factors affect VMT, so when you quantify VMT, some of the big factors are your diversity and density of land uses. If you have a mixed-use development pattern where people live close to shopping, that reduces VMT. Having a transportation network that's designed to encourage bicycling, walking, and providing access to transit helps reduce VMT, and ensuring that those other transportation options are really viable. You know, sometimes, you know, just having transit isn't always enough, but high-quality transit and high-quality bicycle and pedestrian networks. And then the design of land uses, the design of street blocks, and a key factor is the jobs-housing balance. So for example, this image here shows the inflow-outflow pattern of jobs in American Canyon. American Canyon today has about 4,000 jobs. About 90% of those jobs are people from outside American Canyon coming in to work, and then American Canyon residents, there's about, maybe almost 10,000 residents that are working, and they're mostly commuting out. So today, the jobs-housing balance isn't great here in American Canyon, but with future growth under the general plan, it'll become a bit more balanced, and that's good for VMT, too. So in terms of what that means for American Canyon's proposed VMT thresholds, CEQA law, in terms of how it relates to SB 743 and VMT, basically leaves it up to the lead agency, so up to the city in this case, to choose the VMT metrics, to choose the methodology. You can choose to use a traffic model, and so in this case, American Canyon has a citywide traffic model that was created maybe 15-plus years ago. And so the report references some baseline VMT numbers, and they're derived from that model, but they're also derived from some other sources, too. MTC has data on VMT in American Canyon and also NVTA, the regional agency. And so in adopting criteria, the intent is that your criteria should promote reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, promote the development of multimodal networks and diversity of land uses. And as I mentioned, you're not required to adopt thresholds, but it's generally a good idea. It strengthens your EIRs and also, you know, sort of levels the playing field and makes things clear for developers. So in terms of considering what your threshold should be, you know, how much of a VMT reduction should you aim for? So statewide, there's a goal to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 15%, and a lot of cities around the state have adopted that as a threshold. But there are also regional targets, and the Bay Area has a regional target of 19% reduction. And so that is what's recommended here, is that the VMT threshold should be 19% below your existing levels, consistent with that regional goal. And so what that means for American Canyon then is your existing rates, for example, for residential projects, the VMT rate today is 16.6 per resident. For employment projects such as office or industrial, 34 miles per day, per job. And so then the threshold would be 19% below that. So for residential, 13.4 vehicle miles traveled per resident daily. Employment VMT, 27.6. And again, so projects would come in, and the city's model would be relied upon to predict what that level of VMT will be. And then last few notes, so, you know, in addition to the VMT per employee and VMT per resident, certain types of commercial uses that are customer-oriented, there's some recommendations related to evaluating whether or not the customer trips lead to a net increase in VMT. And then there's also, in the guidelines, that the state put out a whole list of project types that can be considered, because it's sort of being screened out, and Brent will talk a little bit more about that.
Thanks, Colin. So I guess as Colin referred to, a lot of the goal of reducing the amount of automobile trips that's necessary just to live your life. The city has done a lot of work with our policymakers and residents over many years to have smart growth, ways of being able to have jobs near housing and services and transit, much like the Broadway District. That really was conceived through a grant fund from the Association of Bay Area Governments because it's a plan that makes a lot of facilities available for people to just conduct their lives without having to drive a long way away. Of course, we had a recent discussion about a certain retail project where people need to drive a long distance to get that particular product, and if it's available here in town, now you don't have to do that. So a lot of it, at its heart, is all about building a city where things, it's a complete city, and you can get what you need done within the city, and that in turn will reduce overall the amount of automobile trips. So as we look at adopting this VMT standard, which would reduce it, per these statistics here, from 16.6 per resident to 13.4, and another commensurate reduction from employment, it's looking at how do we build out our city with all the facilities to enable this reduction to happen over time? So there are certain things that the city can do that can be called screened out. These are things that on their, just on their face, are events that are either consistent with reducing vehicle trips. So a lot of times, we look at these, you'll be seeing with projects coming up, and you've probably seen some that we've had recently, VMT has always been an issue that's been discussed in our latest environmental documents, and it's just built in now as a metric that's evaluated. When we adopt standards, we'll also be able to adopt certain standards where it's accepted that this is something that's already sort of compliant with VMT. Among them would be anything that is exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act by definition would be consistent with VMT. So there is a number of projects that are small in scope, that get California Environmental Quality Act exemption, and that by reference would also be consistent with vehicle miles traveled issues. We also have some projects that have a development agreement. This is a contract that is allowed by state law where the developer has spent many, many years working on a project to get their entitlement, and there's a concern that the entitlement will expire before the project's built, or the city will change the rules. And so state law says you can adopt a development agreement. So anyone who has a development agreement, that kind of locks in the standard. So if there's a development agreement in effect today, well, before this goes into effect, well, then that by reference, the rules have been locked in. So those would be exempt. There may be in the future new development agreements where there was a VMT analysis, and that, too, would be locked in. So we can't change the rules on them. So a development agreement's a very powerful approval, and it would mean that VMT, whatever was analyzed, either before the rules or after the rules, can get locked in. Another thing that is done, we mentioned this is part of the California Environmental Quality Act. Another area is a programmatic environmental impact report. This is a common way in which we conduct our environmental review. It looks at a project holistically and sets forward mitigation measures to address the impacts. And so if there's a subsequent project, we see these in Watson Ranch. We had one just recently with Promontory. It was covered under the programmatic EIR. We explained all that. We applied the mitigation measures that go with that kind of housing development. So if there is a program EIR, VMT is evaluated as part of that, and so that, too, would be another way it's been addressed. There'll be mitigation measures if there are any that's needed. Then a program EIR, we don't need to do a new VMT analysis. Here's one that perhaps someday might apply to American Canyon. It doesn't today, a transit station. This, of course, in the Bay Area, there's a lot of places that do have transit stations. So it's in here as a placeholder, but if it's within a half a mile of a major transit stop or a high-quality transit corridor, then it too is, because then people can use the transit. So that's something that perhaps we'll have in the future. Affordable housing, this is also a nod to the lack of housing in California. State law, through the Office of Policy and Research, part of the Governor's Office, has exempted affordable housing from vehicle miles traveled. You can see there's a lot of exemptions here. They're very thoughtful. Local-serving retail, having retail near us that we can serve locally, obviously is another way of being able to avoid having to drive long distances. And then mixed-use projects as well are a way of getting some efficiency in the way people can conduct their business, and so that's addressed in here as well. I said a whole lot of things. Anybody have any questions so far? Are you with me so far?
Would qualify something as a high-quality transit?
That's defined by state law. It's a really good one. I'm sorry, for that kind of silly answer. We don't have one, but I did have to look it up to see just in case. I didn't commit to memory what it means, but it's something that's, you'd really enjoy using.
It's really good.
It's really good. And, you know, anyone here realizes that we have okay bus service, but I don't think anyone would say it's really good.
You're saying the mine doesn't qualify?
Well, it doesn't. It's great. We really like it, and, you know, we kind of feel good about it, but it wouldn't meet the state qualifications for being a high-quality transit.
It matter of volume or?
Volume, maybe, Colin, he's been a little closer to the issue than me.
Well, so for buses, it is volume, and I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of 10-minute frequencies.
Headways, they're called, coming every frequently.
But for a train station, like a BART station, there's not necessarily a frequency requirement. It's just sort of assumed that BART would meet that criteria, and then ferry terminals also meet the standard.
I was just curious about our bus line.
Thank you.
That's right. Yeah, it's the frequency that gets to be high-quality. Obviously, in public works realm, they build roads. They do a lot of things with roads and things related to transit. And so there are, I only listed 2, 4, 6, 8 here, but in the staff reports, available online, there is quite a long list. As you read these, you kind of get the gist that if you're building new roads, new capacity on roads to accommodate single-occupant automobiles, it's not going to be exempt. But if you're building safety improvements, transit improvements, and other things like that, then those are all exempt from having to conduct VMT analysis. You can still build roads, you can still build capacity, but you have to do a VMT analysis. So these are lists of things where you don't have to do a VMT analysis. So it's a big, long list, and I'm sure Eric over there is very relieved. Of course, we all know that this is an evolving science. We're going to get new legislation from the state, just like everything. They're cooking up all new kinds of new ideas as we speak, and maybe some of them relate to this. So as we adopt, move forward to the City Council adopting a resolution for policy, it's entirely possible that within a very short period of time, the state will come up with some new rules that make it obsolete. And so in recognition of that fact of matter, we have inserted into the resolution administrative updates. So if there's a new, hard to know in advance what they might decide, but it probably isn't surprising to think that there may be new types of approvals or improvements that the state says is consistent with VMT, so we could add that in there. There may be some that they specifically say are not. So either way, it's a way of being able to stay current with state law without having to go through a whole process when the state says we have to do it that way anyway. The other part, too, is we look at some of these things, and I've listed some in here that are specifically identified, say, as CIP. There could be, at some time, road improvement or some kind of transit improvement that's not listed here, and it's like, wow, it's not listed here, so what do we do? It's not listed here. Mercifully, though, the code recognizes that your department heads have an education and experience and are able to have judgment. All of our decisions that we can make can be appealed either to the Planning Commission or City Council. So we do have a policy in the zoning code already that addresses times in which department heads need to make a decision as to whether something that isn't in the code specifically fits within the criteria, in this case, for a VMT exemption. And so in order to have a process for something that might come up where it's not listed here, it's in the resolution to say that the department heads have authority in accordance with this code, which spells out that our decisions can be appealed. So there is a check and balance to that, so they can keep us under control. So with that, that's kind of our brief presentation. Hope that you can all now go home and have a nice dinner table conversation about VMT. And glad to answer any questions you have. And then this, too, you know, being a public meeting, it's open, of course, for public comments and input.
If you guys don't mind, we'll go ahead and open up public comment first for Commissioner and Mayor. Any public comments?
It has to be cleared for Beth. Make it clear.
I mean, I'm sorry, I don't quite understand this, but when I hear about the VMT and all the traveling and stuff like that, I keep thinking about our traffic here. The more, and I'm just going to say what's at my heart, you know, if I offend anybody, whatever. With all the apartment buildings we're building, we've got more and more traffic. We sit, getting out of American, I don't know, maybe this has anything to do with it, but getting out of our streets to even get on the highway takes you forever. How many times have we talked about this? I don't know if this is related to any of this, but I don't know how we can reduce this when you literally sit at, and as far as emissions, I mean, we had this discussion about the chicken guy, how nobody wanted to, you know, because of the emissions. Well, you sit at a light for four or five minutes trying to get out of here, and if there's ever a disaster, we're screwed because where are we going to go? But I don't know if this is related or not, but like I said, when I hear just about the traffic, I keep thinking in my head, well, I don't know how we can reduce anything because we can't even get out of here, and then we're building more and more apartments, and there's going to be more and more cars. So I don't know if that's related to this or not. It might even make it sense, but like I said, I'm confused.
Thank you, Beth.
Well, of course, of course, yes. Well, thank you, Beth, for discussing the elephant of the room. We can do our best to maybe kind of walk through some of that.
And my answer isn't really about VMT, but whenever I come to American Canyon, I am amazed at, I think American Canyon has the longest left-turn waits where you're at a signal of any city I've been to. And I go to all sorts of cities and look at the signals.
I think you're referring to the Caltrans facility.
Exactly, exactly, exactly. So Highway 29 signal settings. I can see where you're coming from. It is a very long signal cycle.
Yes, for which Caltrans is responsible. So for anyone who comes to a lot of meetings, you probably have noticed that the world in which land use decisions are made is highly regulated. We have, and that's one of the reasons why a lot of the environmental review documents are so thick, and, you know, we all need reading glasses. And that's because there are so many rules, and this is yet another one. So taking this, without directly answering your question right now, the state has changed the laws. And so because the state has changed the laws and said, you can no longer consider traffic delay in your environmental review documents. So that's the new rule. What the state wants to focus on is the ability to move people efficiently from one point to another. We talked about one way is having the land uses come close to us, so we don't have to drive so far. But the other side of the equation is requiring cities and our regional agencies like the NVTA to bolster transit so that you have, like, one vehicle with lots of people in it going somewhere, instead of each one of them in their own individual car clogging up the road in front of your house. So the emphasis is trying to refocus the attention on to being able to move people in greater numbers in fewer vehicles, or no vehicle, whether it's on a bike lane or completing our sidewalk network, making it safe to be able to cross the highway, looking at this more specifically to American Canyon. So you don't feel, I have to drive my car because it's scary driving, you know, walking across that street. I've been to a lot of places in America that's like that. I'm getting my car to go across the street. I don't want to walk. So having a greater emphasis on livability and being able to get around without having to go in your car, whether you're afraid for your life, or it's just not, there's no sidewalk, is the emphasis that this legislation is intended to do. Now, will it do that? I'm not, I think the jury's out on that, but they're giving it the all to do that. Now, to get back to a little more of your question, have we abandoned building a road system? And we haven't. The general plan has a circulation element, the new one, it's called mobility, the same thing, where there is a road network that accommodates the land uses we have, and that is paired with the land uses and the traffic that's generated. So there is still a correlation between new roads and its capacity with the land use plan. So that hasn't been abandoned. It's just a lot of the new road capacity will need some further analysis under state law to evaluate its effect on vehicle miles traveled. So we haven't just thrown it all outweigh. So we haven't just thrown it all outweigh. It's still there, just, state doesn't allow the city, though, to say, through our state required anal, like, SEQA is a state required analysis, and we're all kind of used to doing it, so maybe we think it's ours. But it's really a requirement of the state. So the old requirement of the state said you have to make sure that single occupant automobiles can zoom through your town. Now it says you aren't allowed to do that. You've got to think more about how to make people get to walk and bike and take transit instead. And, and try to be a little smarter about the way you grow and put land uses closer to people so that we don't have to just drive everywhere. So that's kind of, hopefully that's a long answer, and I'll probably practice in front of a mirror somewhere and pare it down. But that's kind of how the, does it help a little bit on the connections between them?
Yeah, it does, but it's still, some of it, I mean, we know, here in American Canyon, we have some businesses, but we can't walk there, like you said, we can't walk there. I would love to walk across the street and go shopping or something, but you can't.
Yeah, and, and this is too another, you know, Eric has been working really hard. We have, we have a traffic calming to help with that. We have a bike plan, we have a PED plan, we, we have a local safety road plan. I probably got the names wrong, but basically. There are a lot, there's Vision Zero, which is looking at being able to build roads so that you don't have automobile conflicts with pedestrians. Those are all efforts to make it safe so that you can walk to the store. And wouldn't we all be healthier if we did? It does take a long time, yeah.
You'll be here, Beth. You'll be here, Beth.
Yeah. It's, I think, I think part of the problem is, is just the acronym. VMT, and my eyes roll back. But it's, it's really all about building a livable city where you can get around and not fear for your life that someone might hit you with a car.
A second ago, you, you alluded to, I think, one of the key differences between VMT and LOS in that the old standard was focused on reducing average delay. So that meant on, on Broadway, it means getting people through town quickly. And if you're on a side street or you're pedestrian trying to cross, you don't, it doesn't really help that delay calculation to focus on, on people trying to cross or people making a left turn. It's the focus on getting people through town. So, so with the new standard, reducing VMT means they want, it's, it's, in that case, it kind of flips it around where it's better to help people walk, and, and there's not the same benefit to getting people through town quickly. So it should, should be a greater local benefit.
Thank you, thank you, Beth, because everybody was thinking your question.
Thank you, Beth. Nicole, do we have anyone online?
If there's anybody on Zoom that would like to comment on this item, please raise your hand right now. Nobody's raising their hand.
All right, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners? Is that down on here? No? Commissioner Goff?
I just want to thank Ms. Marcus for her question because that cleared it for everybody. So thank you for your public comment.
Commissioner Altman?
I just, for, for clarification and understanding, and because I'm a bit of a numbers geek to a certain extent, if we go back to slide 11 where it shows the thresholds, my question in trying to understand this is, you've got presently 16.6 vehicle miles traveled per resident. I'm assuming that number is per day, per annum? So if you multiply that by 365, you get what a resident should be driving, which isn't very much and is well less than what most people average in terms of driving.
It includes total population, so an infant who doesn't drive is included in the calculation.
Ah, okay.
And then, and then one other caveat, so, so that number adds up to about 18,000 miles for households. But, but, but this is based on VMT from home. So it doesn't include, if you have a car, you, you know, you might drive your car 12,000 miles or 15,000 miles a year, but not all those miles are from home. So this calculation is based on home-based VMT for the house, for an average household.
Got it. And, and so likewise with employment, then if I'm at a job, driving from that job would be the miles there, and that's why the employment numbers are higher. There, there's an anticipation of commute and so on with, with employment?
Right, the employment number is based on the, the home-to-work commute round trip. And so the average works out to 34 miles.
Thank you. I knew there had to be some, you know, rational, like, so I'm looking at it, I'm going, wait, at 13.4 miles per day, that's like 4,000 miles a year, there's no way. I mean, my wife barely drives and she does 6,500 a year. It's like, how, how does this happen? How do you get there? So thank you, I greatly appreciate that explanation.
Commissioner Cruz?
I don't have any questions, but I think, I believe this policy is a long time coming. I mean, it sounds like it's been in place for well over 10 years. And with our Broadway plan and everything else that we have in place, it sounds like we're already going that, that path. With the Broadway district and with Watson Ranch, we're trying to bring jobs here and, and lessen the carbon footprint, so I applaud that, so I totally support this. Thank you.
Sure. Just two questions for me, so same slide, but is the thought of the proposed thresholds for American Canyon, is that also taking into consideration, you know, people, residents working from home or having just a, you know, different form of employment versus before?
Well, not yet, because, because it's also new, you know, 2020 is relatively recent.
Right.
And we don't, we don't yet know where the work-from-home rates will settle. You know, it seems like they're definitely going to be high compared to what they were before 2020, but it's too early. But, but what will happen is, so, so these thresholds are based on goals for reducing emissions by 2035. And so I think as, when the time comes and it becomes clear that there is a permanent effect of working from home, that, that will help future development stay under that threshold. You know, for example, if 20% of people are permanently working from home, that, that reduces these rates. Whereas these rates are based on 2019 travel patterns, you know, before the pandemic.
So for all the projects that were approved in 2019 and on, is that, is that inclusive of that? Even if they weren't built out yet?
Well, I just meant the, the travel patterns are based on sort of typical 2019 travel patterns, but before the pandemic. You know, just because working from home is still, you know, even though today the rates are, you know, 20, 30% of people are still working from home in a lot of cases. You know, San Francisco is still sort of a ghost town in downtown because so many people are working from home. It's still so recent that, that our VMT estimates are based, yeah, it's based on pre-COVID travel patterns still.
Got it, okay. Perfect.
Thank you, that's all I have. I am looking to the commission to make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation or motion to adopt a resolution of the planning commission of the City of American Canyon, California, recommending the city council of the City of American Canyon, California, approve a citywide policy establishing vehicle miles traveled, known as VMT, as a standard of measurement for potential vehicle traffic impacts, consistent with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA.
And again, a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call, Nicole?
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Goff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz?
Aye.
Chair Malari?
Aye.
All right. Okay, moving on to, going to get this one.
Thank you.
Thank you, Colin. Moving on to the public hearing notification ordinance amendment and discretionary project site posting policy.
Thank you, Chair Malari and Planning Commission, and also members of the public. This is a follow-up item from direction way back during a joint meeting between the city council and planning commission in October last year. So, working glacially for all of you. So I hope we hit the mark. Just kind of a little bit of a background, the zoning code requires public hearing notices to be mailed to property owners within 300 feet of the boundaries of the project site. And doing a little research is like, well, where did that come from to begin with? And it really pairs government code, state law, verbatim, pretty much. So for lack of, you know, any other influence, the city, it is beginning, adopted this standard. And, and so do many, as many, many cities in California. And we don't just mail out a letter before a public hearing, though. Before that, we do additional outreach in a variety of methods. Of course, we have a city manager's update that goes out to a lot of people. We have the around-town newsletter that goes out periodically, but we have folks at work to help with that. Frequency. We also have posted on our website, here is a status of all of the different development projects, city policy projects, construction projects in our department. It's updated monthly, it's a part of a standing packet item in your planning commission agenda. So anyone wants to know kind of what's happening. We also coordinate a lot with Public Works and we have an interactive map that matches up Public Works CIP projects with development projects. Many years ago now, I think going back to 2010, the city council adopted a resolution that encourages development applicants to reach out to neighbors and get their input on their project before they submit an application to the city. And, you know, we coax applicants to do that, and their, their, you know, the degree to which they do that is variable, results may vary. But soon after we get an application, we do mail out letters to residents. But it's based upon the 300-foot standard. And, and really, the, the shortfall of that in one particular circumstance really, I think, brought about the need to relook at this again. We also have GovDelivery, this is a fairly new, within the last three, four years or so. People can sign up to get all kinds of information that we send by email, and fortunately, I think it's caught on, we have about 3,800 subscribers. So that's pretty good, even in a VMT context. So here is this hypothetical example, one actually that did happen. This was really not so much for a project that was submitted and it went to public hearing. This was a project that was early submitted, and we wanted to get planning commission feedback on it in the first place. So they don't go through our very thorough development review process and then get, well, we didn't like it in the first place, kind of answer. But we did find what it revealed is the 300-foot boundary took it to the opposite side to many single-family home residents. That's just where the line fell. And so the question came up to, what's the point of 300 feet? That's too short, impacts extend beyond that. And those are all very good arguments, and they were all talked about back in October. And the upshot of that meeting was that the council gave staff direction to amend the zoning code to increase the boundary to 500 feet. So you can see here, the, the graphic doesn't show up too well on our screen here, but numerically, the 300-foot affected 16 parcels. You, you grow it to 500 feet in this example, and you go to 43 parcels. So for a little extra further, you get a multiple increase in parcels that kind of fit within that boundary. If you go to 1,000 feet, of course, it, it jumps even further again. One of the countervailing thoughts with, well, why not just make it really big? Is it would include a lot of parcels, which can be a burden to an applicant to provide all those labels and postage, and for limited staff resources, mailing to people that are a long distance away from a project. So the balance, as was discussed during October, is 500 feet seems like a nice size. We also did a comparison with other Napa County and neighboring jurisdictions, and we find that the larger jurisdictions tend, tend to have smaller footprints because you have more parcels near each other. And, and some of the less populated, like Napa County, where things are long distances and parcels are bigger, they have a wider. So anyway, the, the balance here that was struck was 500 feet. So in our packet in the resolution is amendments to the zoning code that would increase it to 500 feet. Along with that, we would also increase our informal outreach that happens through mail to 500 feet as well, so that we're, we're consistent. So the same people that get notification early on will get notification when there's a hearing. So just to kind of have that consistent. Kind of moving on, the next component to be able to improve outreach is having an onsite sign that announces that there is a project application at this location. Because people drive, you know, drive around town, they might care because they see it. It may be even beyond 500 feet, but it still matters to them, they're in the neighborhood. So if they're buzzing around, they'll see a sign, and maybe they'll notice it and, and see what it says. And so many cities do this. They require signs posted on properties to announce that there's a development project. And so we took a look at three sophisticated, large cities that have been doing this a long time, and presumably, as there's been a lot of debate as to what a sign needs to look like, what should it say, all that. So why not learn from their experience? And so this one here is an example of a sign from the city of Seattle. So they actually recently updated their onsite sign standards, and I'm showing it here. So as you look at something, there's a picture there of what might be built in very large letters, even if you are a detail person, it's going to have a seven-story apartment building. So that, you know, if someone, you know, were to care, that's going to get their attention. And then maybe they might want to read some of the detail in there. And so what's, there is, there is a lot of information in here, how to contact staff, what is, you know, some of the statistics about the project and so on, where it's located and kind of planned view. So that's a, that's a pretty good sign. My hometown of Vancouver has been doing it for a long time, and I like the graphics a little better than Seattle's, it's a little catchier. So if we're going to post things around town, why not have them a little nicer looking while you're at it? Similar to Seattle, there's a picture of the project, a site plan showing it in big letters, rezoning application. So these are, these are some, some things here, you can kind of see, you know, what's happening, maybe a nice casual way to kind of get people's attention instead of some sort of very bureaucratic words. And then details. So the, the important points are bold and visual. So that's like a pretty good example. The other one is Toronto, I think, kind of like the graphics a little better, it's a little cleaner. And like the others, it has graphics, a change is proposed for the site. So it isn't just announcing something that's already there, it's going to change, at least it's proposed. Here's a summary, also in big letters, and then information, and tell us what you think. And we do a lot of that, too. All of our, our GovDelivery emails and our website posts all have links to enable people to click on that and tell us what they think. And so that's a nice feature to have right there so that they can do it as well. Nicole has been really good at instituting QR codes so that people can get their smartphones and go zzzoop right to the right location on our website. And Toronto has that, and we do it too. So that seemed like a, a good idea to put on a sign. So here is our proposed sign for American Canyon, it has our logo. It has a picture there, summary, information, tell us what you think, has the QR code, has a description of what is proposed and the terms of the change, who to contact, and then a place there to, to even add on when a hearing notice would happen. So that's kind of what we were able to come up with. The sign would be four by six feet, so it's, it's a big sign, it's not a little yard sign. It's going to need some posts to hold it. So you're definitely, if you're paying attention, you're going to notice it. And if you care, you'll get a pretty, pretty easy view of what's happening, maybe even from your automobile, but I don't suggest you do look at it too detailed. You might want to stop and look. Pardon me?
Those are rentals.
Well, this example would be, but it would be for any new project, you'd have a picture there of the project. We just took an example of one that we have right now.
In that particular project, or is it rentals?
It is, it is. So when you have a, you know, you acquire a sign, you want to make sure that you have you want to make sure that you have a policy that addresses what might happen, that maybe you didn't think would happen. And so in the policy, the applicant is responsible for the sign. They post it, they put it up. And so whenever you build something, you've got to maintain it, and signs are no different. So even though it's got catchy graphics, it might still attract graffiti. And we don't like graffiti in our town. And so there is a policy there that if there's graffiti, the applicant's informed and they have a certain period of time to, to get rid of the graffiti, maybe get a new cover for the sign, whatever. But we want to think about that. And then get some consistency so that it's not entirely up to the applicant to do whatever they feel like is right. We want to have some standards so that when we have a sign, we're confident that it's a sign that we think serves the purpose we want. So four foot by six foot, seven to nine feet high, durable material, half-inch plywood or equivalent. I'm sure there's other materials someone can come up with that's just as good. Location on the property, five to 10 feet off the property line. This one here, you can see, is right next to the sidewalk where it really makes it easy to go with a spray can. But if it's a little bit further away, then might not, you know, it might be a little safer. We just talked about the sign content, that's the previous exam, you know, previous one has quite a lot of content. And then at some point, you know, you want to get rid of the sign. And that would happen after the project's approved and the appeal period's expired. If it's denied, then I guess we don't need it. And sometimes applicants withdraw their applications. So we don't want sign clutter if it's not serving a purpose. So that's kind of a summary there of the policies that would go along in hand with that. See, we always, this is VMT compliant because it's categorically exempt from California Environmental Quality Act. Signs are by definition exempt. And then, you know, we have policies that'll go with that and, and that doesn't really create environmental impacts. So just in terms of a timeline, here we are today on the 24th. If we have a recommendation from the planning commission, it'll be advanced to the city council on September 5th. And the council will, you have, you have the benefit of one decision, because it's one resolution, kind of bundled the two. But the council will separate it because the 500-foot public hearing notice is an ordinance change. So that's a recommendation on ordinance. The onsite sign is just a policy and that can be approved through resolution. And if the city council agrees with it as amended, however, then it would be take effect right after they vote on it. The ordinance, assuming it were approved, would move on to the next meeting for a second reading. And then ordinances are effective generally 30 days after the second reading, which would take us to October 19. So with that, glad to answer any questions you have.
I'll, I'll go ahead and open up for public comment first, anyone in the room? I have one card here. Mr. Donaldson?
My name is, can you hear me on this? My name is Al Donaldson, I live at 64 Melvin Road. I think your presentation was good and all the signs that we're proposing are good. They'll definitely be beneficial. First thing I would point out, though, is we do have a sign ordinance in American Canyon and I'm not sure that four by six would fit in that sign ordinance. So that needs to be looked at a little bit. My big concern is, why are we doing this in the first place? We're doing this to make sure that residents know what's going on around their community. What we've been doing in the past has not worked, does not work. 300 feet became somewhat of a joke when you saw the one that was discussed up here. Either there was no residents in the area or the property owners perhaps lived somewhere else. And that problem doesn't change no matter what we do. But you have people here who have been active and watching what goes on within our city within a reasonable amount of time, who are totally unaware, who are totally unaware about Napa Cove and what was going on there. Napa Cove was supposed to have sent out notices within the 300 feet. The lady in the house right next to it never got a notice. The lady that runs the childcare across the street never got a notice. So I don't know if that's a developer's problem or what. We were then told that there was telephone surveys done. Nobody got a telephone call, we don't know who was surveyed, they didn't tell us how many were surveyed or anything else. So 300 feet or 500 feet isn't going to fix the problem. We'll have to look at who all are impacted, now using Napa Cove as an example. We live on Melvin Road, traffic is a nightmare, certain hours in the morning, certain hours at night. When it's not a lot of traffic, we have people that don't think stop signs apply to them. They don't think a speed limit applies to them. We're going to do some things to try and address the speed, but it won't because the idiots that do that are going to do it no matter what we do. So all the people on Melvin Road would be impacted by extra traffic created by Napa Cove. The only way out of Napa Cove is going to be onto Melvin Road. People on James are going to be impacted, people on Casilla are going to be impacted. So the 500 feet would not contact all these people.
30 seconds.
We need to do better at seeing who is impacted and address that issue. We had a lot of issues, there's inadequate parking going on with these tenants. We've yet to see the outcome of that, maybe we'll be lucky and we'll have no extra cars. There's no parking on Melvin Road right now. The traffic coming road is going to take away a lot of what's being used now. So bringing in more people and looking at your VMT and everything else, just blew that out of the water as far as emissions go. So I'm against the 500 feet, I think something else has to be developed, either figure out how to determine who will be impacted and make sure they are notified somehow.
Please wrap up.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to address the issue. I think it's a, it's an excellent, it's an excellent point that Mr. Donaldson made in the past and we're aware of that perspective. One of the challenges you have in, in the concept, and I'm going to, hope I don't, I hope I don't misunderstand what was said. In varying the letter notification based upon potential impacts to people from the individual project, that would require a lot of judgment as to where to draw the line, who is affected, why are they affected? There is a lot of subjectivity to an effort like that. It's a very laudable goal, but in terms of a, a development review process that needs to be consistent, evenly applied to, with respect to every applicant, it's, it's not practical to use judgment to expand or contract based upon one or more individuals' opinions about who may or may not be affected by one factor or another. To address that issue, though, we do have all these other supplementary ways in which people can remain informed, as I went through in the presentation. And then the onsite signs is also another way, so that if someone's inclined to be concerned about changes in their neighborhood, then there will be a four by six foot sign that will announce its presence. And then they can have, they'll be able to contact staff and become informed and tell their neighbors or whatever might be happening. And this is a way of being able to have a consistent standard so that applicants don't come to American Canyon in fear that, that for one reason or another, legitimate or suspect illegitimate reasons, you know, we might do things differently for them than somebody else. It's, it's just a burden that's, I don't think can be overcome. I know I've spoken to our city attorney about the, this issue specifically and perhaps he might have a couple of words to, to say about that.
I, I do, Brett, thanks. We've got to balance the, you know, a couple of things. There are certainly policies in both the government code, dealing with requirements for the comprehensive plan, general plan, excuse me, and implementing zoning ordinances in general law cities and counties. And then also now restated provisions in SEQA that indicate that local agencies are to maximize public participation. The, the kinds and types of notice that are proposed in the report before you, you know, try to implement those things. Is it going to be imprecise in a legal sense? Maybe not, all right? But in a pragmatic sense, there's also a lot of things that the city does through social media to broaden the base. So, you know, going through the commission input on this, the specific case in question, and maybe I'm going to refer back to VMT. There you have a legislative indication of certain projects that weren't, that aren't going to be subject to VMT. So the thing that I'd say is, there's always going to be an overlay of state law that's going to exempt things, but at the same time, say that you've got to take these steps to maximize public participation. I think what staff's done here is a balance between all those things. And I also think that other aspects of the city, like I mentioned a moment ago, social media emphasized it also. But I'm going to say, I think even with an effort like this, there's probably always going to be a situation where a, let's just say, an intense or disfavorable land use project could come forward and there won't, you know, I'm not going to say the lady next door didn't get notice of it, but there's going to be, you know, a chance that notice will have not been received. You know, I think staff's been pretty good about raising this in the past is, you know, there are individuals and businesses that, as a result of what they do, even if it's just a desire to participate in government, have participated in the request for notice provisions that exist in two of the statutory schemes that I set. So, you know, there's another way. Of course, it's proactive from individuals or businesses to get it. But I think, you know, in evaluating this, I think that's the larger context that I would take in con, in, in the consideration when you're acting on this recommendation. Certainly, there's no lock, you know, Brent has a phrase for it, which I can't remember. You know, but there's no lock on creativity. He says it much more sardonically with a humorous touch. So, you know, the point is, if there's something that you think ought to be included in this, that's why you're where you are. But, you know, I, I think the background on this larger regulatory matrix is appropriate and helpful. So, you know, that's the larger context that I present on this matter for your consideration.
Thank you, Bill. What, just to, Brent, now you're up there, the, the sign ordinance that Mr. Donaldson had mentioned about the size of the sign? Is that, are we in compliant with the four, what was it, four by six? Is that compliant or is there something that he alluded to as far as the, the size of it?
We could take a look at the sign ordinance to see if this is something that might be subject to the sign ordinance. Generally, sign ordinances are referring to signs that aren't mandated by government, which this would be. This is a public notification purpose for the sign. In most cases, signs that we regulate are intended to be used for commercial purposes or are non-governmental agencies. And, and this is a, a different sort of reason for communicating and therefore may be exempt from the signed ordinance. But we're happy to take a look at it and see if there's something that we might have missed legislatively.
Great, thank you. Any other public comment? State your name.
Beth Marcus. With regards to the sign ordinance, I was actually the chairman of the chamber at the time we were doing the chamber, the sign ordinance. And I think that, that particular thing is exempt. I think what we were doing was more like grand openings and that kind of thing. I, I could be wrong, but that's my take there. I had a question about the, the signs. When they go up, once they're, once they're put up and people see what's going on, do they have a chance to, is it too late at that point to say, "Oh, well, we don't really want that development?" Or, because if, if that's the case, then there's really no use of putting the sign up. As far as, I don't want to go into detail with Napa Cove, but what happened with that situation? And that, one reason why I come to city council, I mean, city council, sorry, wrong meeting, planning commission, is because I like to know what's going on in the community and this is where you, you learn what's going on. We on Melvin Road really seriously did not know anything about Napa Cove until, and this was during COVID when I was online and I heard and I go, "What the heck is this? None of us heard of this." And that's how that, that came up and the 300 feet, the 500 feet and all that kind of stuff. So again, that's why I like coming here. Not everybody likes to come to planning commission or any meetings to find out what's going on. But my question is, the signs, you know, like, once they go up and it says, "Contact us", I mean, is it too late for someone to say, "Oh, I have a concern about that project"?
Thanks, Beth. There are a lot of cities that require the signs when, when it's time for a public hearing. And that's only 10 days in advance of the decision. This policy would require the applicant to install the sign once, soon after the application is submitted. And so we want to be sure to get, I'm not sure you can read that, but we want to be sure, the purpose for this is to get public input. And so this is going up soon after the application is submitted. It's going to go out around the time that the letters go out to people within 500 feet. We'll be sending out notification on gov delivery to all our 3,800 friends. And so the world, the news will get out. We do have a QR code on here, so they can scan that with their phone. It'll take them to the website, there'll be a link there for input on the project. But they might want to maybe learn a little more about it first before having an opinion. But that's up to the person. But, yeah, it has a description of what's there and who to contact, what kind of approval it is. And it is intent there to get information out so that people can give us input early in the process when it's easier to address.
I think a couple of points is, first, I'm not pointing a finger at anyone in the city that's not doing a good job. I think everyone tries to do a great job and does well. I think the signs are awesome, especially if we put one up as soon as something is considered so that people get a chance in a timely manner to give an input. My biggest problem here is still this 300 to 500 feet. I watched one day over 150 double trucks park on Poke Way where they were told not to park, delivering something, I don't know, what the hell were they bringing in? 150 trucks, it went till dark. That kind of money that is costing for this project, notifying more people than you know to, need to notify is a drop in the water. So if you notify more people, if I get something in the mail that's not of interest to me, I get rid of it. So if you notified more people and I understand the legalities and stuff, and maybe this is that creative part, you're here representing your citizens in this community, you need to make sure that they get the information properly. Beth goes to all the meetings and stuff, planning commission, city council, different things. She was unaware. If someone like that is unaware, what chance do the rest of us have? I go on the city website and look at the information. Some of it's hard to navigate, some of it's real easy. My worst one that really irritated me was, okay, I'll go a quick way. I'll go back through, this is on Napa Cove. I'll go back and look at the minutes from the city council meetings and planning commission meetings. And I'll find out where it was talked about there. I found out there's no meat in those meetings that are posted on the website. It's just a document with nothing in it. It's just a document with nothing in it. I was told, wow, you can go to YouTube, watch the videos. Well, that's great, but you can't fast forward all the way through YouTube or come back if you pass something. You gotta watch the whole darn thing. How many hours of YouTube would I have to watch of city council meetings to find where the discussion was on this and hope I hit it? So, I mean, even if you showed due diligence, and if you try, it's not always working. And I'm just saying, I think this is the gap. I think we can do better. I think we can notify more people than we have to, to get the information out. And yes, we own some of the problem too, to try and stay involved and try and look at the things that we need to. I guarantee you, if those signs go up,
Thirty seconds.
I'll be looking at every one of them. I think it's a great idea. I think it's a good tool. You're putting a lot of things on there to make it easy for everybody. But if it's on a road I don't go down, it may still be something that would impact me, and I may never see that sign. So, again, look at the citizens and how they may be impacted. Can you do better? I think you can. That's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I will go ahead and have Mr. Cooper have opportunity to respond.
Well, I, I, I think perhaps, I, I'm not sure whether, no, I don't think I do.
Okay, alright. I'll go ahead and close public comment.
Maybe anybody online, this would be my question?
Yes, if there are people on Zoom that would like to make comment, please raise your hand at this time. Nobody's raising their hand.
Thank you. And with that, I'll go ahead and close public comment. Commissioners, I'll start down Mr. Altman.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank Mr. Donaldson for coming and for speaking his piece. I tend to agree to, to a, you know, fair extent. I don't know what the right number is. I don't know, you know, certainly 500 is better than 300. I don't know if 1,000 is too much. I don't know if 600 or 800 or, you know, what, what the number is. So, I'm not gonna focus too much on that. But I do, I do know that the city is doing a lot of things that, in, in terms of certain social media efforts to try and put things out there. The one that I know that a lot of residents use is the Nextdoor app. And I don't know if the city plans on, and I think they should plan on posting things like this, like when this, when the sign goes up. I believe it would be prudent for the city to do a Nextdoor post saying to the City of American Canyon residents. And I know it can't be an interactive one because of the way Nextdoor's set up, but it can be a public announcement, as I understand it, that here's a project under consideration, and once it's posted, it's posted. And it just becomes another way to try and increase the awareness people can have of a project. You know, as I said, I, I don't know about the, how many feet or whatnot. I also know that in, in this day and age, some old things that are still requirements, like posting public meeting notices in a newspaper. It's a state law, so you gotta do it. But you know what? Most people aren't finding about, about a public meeting by looking at a newspaper because most people aren't looking at a newspaper. So, you know, I mean, I, I think if we move kinda beyond the letter of the law to really sort of what is the intent of the law, and, and to me, that's my takeaway from what Mr. Donaldson's comments are. And, and so, you know, I mean, that, that's kind of my thinking and my thoughts. Do I support this? Yes, because 500 is better than 300. But I think that even more could be done, and therefore should be done, that wouldn't take a whole lot of additional effort. I mean, we do have a, city does have a communications director and doing a post on Nextdoor. And there may be other outlets that I'm not familiar with. I know my kids use Reddit and Discord, and I, I don't know a whole lot about either of them. But it's, you know, there may be things there where you can do that just so that more people are aware. So, that's what I got.
Yeah, and Commissioner Altman, I think you, you sort of hit the nail on the head there. We do, you know, we're here tonight talking about this aspect of outreach, but we do work within a context of a citywide policy through the Outreach Manager's Office, which is a arm of the city manager. And so, we'll can certainly raise the issue that you brought. But I do know that they're aware of Nextdoor, and they have certain policies about how they want, what, what outlets for information, you know, they like to use. And I, I know they have their reasons. But we'll raise it just because you, you brought it tonight, so we can bring it up.
Vice Chair Cruz.
Thank you, Chair. So, first of all, thank you, Mr. Donaldson, for your input. Definitely, I hear your concerns. With this, I do absolutely approve, or support this. It sounds like it's more about information dispartment, dispersment, and transparency of what projects are going on here. So, I don't see how this could, could hurt any. But Mr. Donaldson did raise a question for me. So, I was wondering, when the applicant does apply or submit, and there needs to be dispartment of, dispersment of information to the residents or to people within the 300, the 500, the 1,000, whatever it may be, how do we hold them accountable of that, to make sure that they actually sent out their information? That's one thing, one of my questions. But again, it's, it's about dispersment of this information. I don't see how this could be bad in any way. Because before coming to the planning commission, I had no idea what was going on until I became a commissioner here. So, I think one more way of letting people know would be to extend circles or whatnot. But that's all I had. My main question is, how do we keep those applicants accountable in dispersing that information? Thank you.
I think it's, you know, I think, Vice Chair, it would be definitely something that we work on. We do encourage applicants to reach out to property owners in the neighborhood and vicinity. Some just do a better job than another. We've, we've had a number of examples now, and we share that with them. And just, some are a little more in tune with than others. And we can, we can highlight, I think we do, but we can certainly make a point of highlighting what it was the applicant did in advance of their application when it does come to the planning commission, so you can be aware of, of, of what they've done. And, and that way, they'll know, you'll know, which, which can help with accountability.
Commissioner Mott?
Yes, thank you. I have the same question. Who was accountable for sending out the notices to the residences within the 500, 300, 1,000 feet? And how do we hold them accountable for that? Just as we're holding them accountable for the graffiti on the signs, right? And then my other question is, can we keep the sign up upon completion of the project? Because I know that we drive by a lot of construction sites, and you just see the construction company name, but you don't see what's actually happening.
Oh, that's a good point. We, we could take, we could perhaps start with this and, and look at augmenting it with a, a construction notification sign that has more information than might normally be put.
Thank you.
And we, we do, like, and we, as we've been talking about, we do require applicants to reach out to residents beforehand. But staff sends out a letter soon after the application is submitted to, within 300 feet and now within 500 feet. And in hand with that, we have our, our regular social media and, and other notifications that we do in hand with that to get the word out early in the process. I find that's the best way of being able to vet issues in the most civil and productive manner possible.
Commissioner Goff?
Thank you. Just for my understanding, notifications are, right currently, 300 feet from property line?
That's correct.
So, no matter, all sides of the property, it's not from the epicenter of the property line? And it is just to property owners?
Yes.
So, one of the things that I think we should really do is add into that and residents within the boundary line. Because a lot of these places, it is a one property owner, maybe the owner of the property lives in San, I don't know, somewhere out of state. They own that property, that notice goes to them. It may be a property that houses, you know, five, six, 50 residents in there. Those residents don't get notified. So, I think an addition to this would be residents within that same distance would reach a significant more number of people than just the property owners. Because the property owner is under no obligation to notify their, their tenants in any way, shape, or form around this, is my understanding.
Yes, there is a, a practical issue in that the city doesn't have a rental registry. So, in the absence of, of another means to know which, you know, which property has a tenant versus a property owner, there could be duplicates sent out.
Right.
One for the resident, one for the property owner, the same address.
I know, I get a lot of mail that is addressed to resident of my street address. It doesn't, not addressed to me, it's just resident of. So, something like that, I think, could augment the notification process to everybody who lives around the property, not just necessarily the property owners.
Right, the, the property owner records come from a title company. And so, when the resident doesn't live at the property, it's their residence where they do live, or office, or PO, wherever they have their mail sent. But there isn't a separate database that we have readily available that would identify who among that radius is a tenant. So, just thinking out loud, you'd have one list, which is the, the, one of property owners from the title company, and then another list that comes from just taking the addresses within that and just sending it to everybody. And in some cases, some of them, some people will get two letters, one from one source and one from the other. Others, of course, then you'd hit all the tenants that might be in the area.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
I think, thank you, Commissioner Goff. I think to touch up on that, I mean, another opportunity would be to look at the, you know, utility record lines as well.
Might be a resource.
Identifying that piece. Yeah.
There's very much, lots of resources. I do appreciate Mr. Donaldson coming up and, you know, voicing his concern. A couple of things I mind, and just thinking about being creative and, you know, how are we gonna answer the call to this? If it's 300, 500, 1,000, maybe we look into something of a shared responsibility between the city and also the applicant. You know, I don't know, we're, say we're responsible, you know, with the intent that we go out for 1,000, you know, feet. We share that responsibility of the city doing X, X feet, and, you know, the applicant doing the remainder of that. Just, kinda just thinking out loud is, you know, the thought of having a lot of the social media platforms and an empty house here with the respect of you three here. We, we do have to do better. We're trying to touch as many residents as possible. And I can even tell you, rest assured, I mean, with the buildings that are coming up, we're gonna get those noise, those, that noise of saying, we never heard, we never saw. So, what are we gonna do? I think that we could try our very best. And I think this is the attempt to do that. But I do would love, I'd love to explore what that number is of that feet, 300, 500. And especially to, to your point, Mr. Goff, and if I own property, I might be living in another state. I don't need to tell my resident if it doesn't, doesn't concern me, right? So, that's the connection that we're trying to make with our residents here. And another thing about the proposed notice that we have, maybe we can work on the aesthetics and the coloring a, a little bit more. Just appealing to the eye, I'm just thinking of, you know, maybe the glare of the sun might kind of mute it all. But one thing about this is that when we get this information from the applicant, I wanna ensure that we are not going to allow the applicant to add any other information on the sign or, you know, a different format, that this is something that we are going to stick with. And then also, we talked about the, the, the sign, sign removal. Just what does that, you know, graffiti and removal and all of that thing, what, what does that consist of? What's the timeline of that? Because there's just, we all know, this looks like a nice, pretty white canvas to me. Those are my only thoughts and comments.
The policy with respect to sign removal timing, the policy has the applicant removing the, the sign within 10 calendar days of the effective date of the approval, the withdrawal date, or the project denial date.
Okay, 10 days, okay, okay. And then, to allude to you, you're thinking to have it remain until after completion, if approved after completion of a project?
I, I think a, a construction sign would have a, a different series of information at that point because it's entitled, it's permitted, they're constructing it. So, it, it may serve a different purpose, to let people know something's being built and, and what will go up there. At that point, the application's not discretionary.
Maybe like a coming soon? And then also, I just noticed that on the proposal, it says like, a meeting has not yet been scheduled. Details will be posted here and online, so we'll have another.
That's right, yeah, we have an intent here, we have room there to post the public hearing date.
Alright, Commissioners.
Alright, I'll make a motion to receive and file a report on an ordinance to amend American Canyon Municipal Code ACMC, Chapter 19.40.050, to increase hard copy property owner notification from 300 feet to 500 feet of a proposed project location and a discretionary project site posting policy.
I think there's a.
Chair, could I ask for perhaps a more specific recommendation from the commission? If there are some of the suggestions that we heard here, if the commission agrees, that would be good direction for staff to take to forward to the council?
I agree with that. Anybody wanna make the attempt? No? Okay.
Alright, I will make the attempt to make a motion for the Planning Commission of City of American Canyon to make a recommendation and approve the ordinance to amend American Canyon Municipal Code ACMC, Chapter 19.40.050, to increase the hard copy property owner notification to a reasonable amount to be discussed at a later date with the intent of having a shared responsibility between city and applicant. Minimum of 500 feet. And adoption of discretionary project sign posting policy. With the intent to have the sign posted up until after completion of the project. And something like that. And with the intent to explore additional social media platforms for additional outreach of the community. I hope you got that, Nicole. And to review the proposed aesthetics of the four by six sign. Period.
I second that motion.
Nicole?
Nicole?
Yes, Commissioner Altman?
Aye.
Commissioner Goff?
Aye.
Commissioner Mohammed?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cruz?
Aye.
Chair Malari?
Aye.
All right. I don't know. Doing the best we can here. Yeah. We will go ahead and move on to, Mr. Cooper, you're just staying on the podium tonight.
Stay here.
All right, let's talk about our active planning projects. What do we got going on?
Let's see. Here we go, right at the bottom. Okay, just some of the highlights on the active projects. The first one here, we have a new application submitted. We had a pre-application before that, but now we have the for real one. This is for a 220,000 square foot warehouse on Commerce Court. There is one there now closer towards Eucalyptus. This is, this is the northern part, there's three parcels and this is the northern one. It'll leave an empty one in the middle for a future building. But we have a new use permit application for a warehouse there. It'll look just like the other one that's already there. Let's see. Let's see, there were some projects that went to the Planning Commission at your last meeting that went on to the city council. And this would be, the city council approved the Napa Valley Ruins and Gardens tentative map for the condominiums and hotel. And they also approved the Promontory project as well for its subdivision. And they also approved the first reading for the Watson Ranch technical update. And so the, the second reading will be going to the city council on September 5th. We have a new application that just came in. We had a pre-application for it, Paintball Jungle, just a couple of days ago, applied for a conditional use permit. So this is a new application that's just, just come in. But we've been talking to them for quite a while through their pre-application. So a lot of the technical issues have, have been discussed. And so we'll be beginning our outreach on that. And let's see. So those are the highlights from the development review, a lot of construction going on, of course. And, and that's, that's mostly it for my update. If you have any questions about anything going on, happy to answer questions.
Any questions from Commissioners? No? Think we're good for tonight? Okay.
Okay.
All right, moving on. Do we have any Commissioner items? Commissioner Altman?
I just want to congratulate the, our fellow Planning Commission member who is the newly made interim principal of American Canyon High School. Well done, Mr. Goff.
All it took was me saying yes.
So my question is, when people get in trouble and they get sent to the principal's office?
I send them to the vice principal's office.
Good answer.
I knew you were a smart man.
All right, any other Commissioner items? Right, look into adjourn the meeting at 8:06. Thank you, guys.